You could please read the substitute language.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the substitute motion says that council adopt the following actions. Uh, and it is to add a new section to that says transfer slash appropriate appropriate $7,250 in the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council Fund. 59B account number 14126, 26, number 59.
Ah!
14 appropriation number appropriation number 14126. Account number 14W244 for the purposes of deadwood brush removal in Lycum County Canyon Park, Aliso Canyon Park, and Wilbur Tampa Park. And then the what was previously.
Go fuck your mother, you're the citizens. Hopefully you'll be back by that time.
And Mr. McCosker, thank you. All right. Any other specials? C9, Madam Clerk, what's available for us to vote on?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items 1 through 11 and 15 through 20, sir.
Very good. Members, those items are now before us. I see no one wishing to be heard, so let's go ahead and go on the roll. Close the roll.
10 eyes?
All right, uh, let's move now to our closed session items. I'd like to ask.
Yeah, we heard these items in budget committee. I think they could be heard here in open session as recommended, cruel settlements.
Very good. Thank you. And I see no one wishing to be heard on those matters. So Madam Clerk, if you could please read the recommendations and call those items for a vote.
Yes, sir. Item 31 in the case entitled Farmers Insurance Exchange versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $104,324 in settlement. Item 32 in the case entitled Fire Insurance Exchange versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement.
Thank you. All right, those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so on those recommendations, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
10 eyes?
All right, uh, before we go to public comment, I would just like to, um, offer a few thoughts, members. Uh, because I know that all of us were stunned by the news that was.
No, you weren't stunned, you lying sack of Armenian dog shit.
Member Price. And I just wanted to briefly address that and let all of you know that today, uh, I am filing a motion to begin the process for suspension of Councilmember Price.
Yeah, suspension. You mean expulsion. Suspension. You mean expulsion.
It's important that this council have the opportunity to.
Fucking A, dude.
What the best course of action should be, given the pending criminal charges against our colleague. Uh, in the past, um, the call, uh, the council has, um, not been given an opportunity.
Is it better now?
Furiously debate and discuss.
It's Dublin.
Uh, suspension motions, and I don't want that to happen now. I want us to have the opportunity to consider all of its implications, to consider the charges, uh, to consider the impacts that it may have on the people of the 9th District. Uh, so you will have a full opportunity to engage in that. This will proceed according to regular.
Only had to reset the mixer twice and the computer twice, and then the cameras didn't come up. Makes sense.
Rules Committee will be reporting back recommendations to the council for your consideration. At the same time, today.
Lying sack of shit. Look at them all looking concerned. Look at her, she's crying. Look at the little bitch on the end crying. Bitch, wipe them tears. Hold on. Let me lick them tears off your fucking cheek, bitch. Mmm, Democrat tears are the best tasting too. Mmm, like cherry. Like cherry.
Uh, consideration about what the appropriate next steps should be, um, if there were to be a suspension, uh, how the people of the 9th District, how their interests will continue to be protected. Um, and, uh, that is something that we want to fully engage, uh, the people of the district.
Yeah, crocodile tears.
So that motion will be introduced and will be up for consideration as well.
She is really crying. My friend, the thief got caught stealing. Just like the other black dude too that was on there, Mike Ridley Thomas last month. Only a matter of time before he gets caught. Trust me, they're investigating him and all of them. All of them, even the crier. Even that bitch crying at the end. I guarantee you, she's stealing something. Guaranteed motherfucking tea.
Replacement appointments will be necessary, and all of you, I would appreciate your thoughts.
And thank you Lonnie for the shirt. I appreciate you. I know you can't really see it too well, but just because of the green and the yellow.
Proceed in, in chairing your committees. Uh, I would very much appreciate having your input on that. Um, and, uh, uh, I think that's, that's all the comments I'll provide for now, other than the fact that, um, charges have been filed, there's, there's serious, uh, issues.
Yeah, federal charges, federal, federal charges, crybaby. Aw, look at her at the end. Hee 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 hee. I love watching her cry. Hopefully she tears up some more.
Deterred from that business, and we'll continue to make sure that, um, all of the people of the city, including the people of the 9th, 9th District, um, are represented fully and their interests are.
Yeah, I know Tara, that's the problem with the green and the yellow. That's why I tell people, and she said to me, everything was great, just this last one, just she, she forgot.
So, uh, with that.
You know what I mean? The green screen, uh, people just don't really think about it because they don't realize that there's a green screen behind me, you know?
Meeting, so Madam Clerk, if you could.
Is what it is, you know? I still want to wear it. I can still wear it and, you know, out in real life.
On the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call.
And again, uh, look, I apologize, guys, for the technical difficulties yesterday and this morning. I gotta tell you, the reason I'm even more mad today is because I'm gonna tell you. I went through this entire room yesterday, okay? Cleaned everything. Look at, I redid all the machines. Look at the numbering on the machines is all new. I mean, I went through 1,238 drops on this one machine alone and lowered every single fucking one of them, so they wouldn't blow your ears out anymore. And I did 100 off of that one. So I, I'm trying. I'm trying to get it better, and I cleaned all the screens. I cleaned every camera. That way it looks pop, you know, the camera should be more poppy. It looks clean, you know, and, and man, and that, that really angers me to come in here and have that fucking echo right off the jump. Which we didn't even have yesterday. Ah, gotta love it. What happened to the sound? Don't tell me now. Bro, what happened?
Have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute for general public comment. Speak to the items before beginning general public.
Yes, see, thank you so much for 10 tier onesubs. Everyone who's got a free tier one sub from Yessi to the family.
Be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many.
You guys gotta remember something, man. I like things perfect. I, I'm a perfectionist in that sense. I, as, as much as I like to, you know, I'm not great at making things perfect, I like things to be perfect. I run things better. I feel it's better. Everything goes smoother. So I try to make it as best as I can. That's it. So that's for you.
Move on to the next speaker.
You know what I mean? If I didn't, think about it. If I didn't give a shit, right, I wouldn't be yelling and screaming. I would just say fuck it. Either you watch or you don't. But I'm not that way. I want to fix it and I want it right. I want it the way it was, the same way the whole time.
If you do, do not do so.
Uh, lysis, no. I didn't have to check on. Is he wearing lipstick? I don't know. Maybe chapstick. Maybe cherry chapstick? No, it's the, it's the, it's the screen. It's the cherry chapstick on the screen. I gotta, what I gotta do is, another thing, I gotta lower the color on that one screen. It's just too colorful.
Because of feedback and a time delay between the live.
Thanks Randy. Randy, I loved the call in yesterday. That was fucking awesome. I love it when you're burdensome.
And for our callers who have called in to speak.
That's it Jennifer, I want it perfect. I want you to come in and have a great time. I understand that I fucked that up sometimes with my anger. I do realize it. I don't like it.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna.
But you notice that I don't just pick on shit that isn't great. I mean, when it's perfect, it's good. And we're going.
So that you can be directed to the.
All right, let's get it, guys. First one.
I'm gonna start with, uh, Brandon Smith, Ernest Moore, Greg Harris, Jeffrey Delshod, and Rob Quan, please.
All new folks. I haven't heard one of those people ever.
Good morning, Speaker. Please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good morning, council members. Thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Brandon Smith of Council District 5. Uh, recently, I asked.
Sup James Bond, happy day, happy hunting.
Relate repeated unwillingness to protect tenants in my building and citywide. I've returned because the matter is very time sensitive. Over the past few years, we, the tenants of 707 Crenshaw Boulevard and 701 Crenshaw Boulevard next door have sought help from the Housing Department for multiple issues. LAHD has failed to act each time. Right now, our landlord is attempting to seize nearly one-third of my neighbor's two-bedroom apartment in order to subdivide and rent their space at market rate. This move would be a workaround.
You can't divide an apartment in half.
We are surprised LAHD approved the plan. My neighbors have an LAHD appeal.
How is that?
June 22nd. Construction will begin on July 3rd, assuming there is no intervention. At this point, my neighbors have little faith left. But I continue to believe that change can happen, so I repeat my call for your support in taking to task a gravely dysfunctional housing department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yeah, I don't see how that's possible. Take somebody's apartment and split the apartment down the middle. Come on. When have you ever heard about that?
Morning Speaker.
Who does that?
Remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Greg Harris homelessness. Is that okay?
So you have one minute for general.
Wish they were louder. Okay.
I live to be a community foundation, and I've been, uh, privy to been in contact with a few city councilmen, uh, as well as, uh, the mayor's office.
Sup BC?
In the, uh, interim housing division. And I was able to show those people right up the 10 freeway, right up in Baldwin Park, a solution that involved the manufacturers of the tiny homes, the social services that were involved, and it was just a clean solution. You know what I mean? Just done. It was just, you can use this turnkey. You can just have it built and walk right in it. And that was over a year ago. And nobody has contacted us regarding this. I'm also.
Not yet. A little bit, Moon.
The, um, the other tiny homes, the smaller ones, the pallets, which in my opinion is more jailhouse style. It's not good for the esteem, if you will.
Well, those people can get jobs if they want something better, or they can live on the street. We're already paying for it, so I guess what we're paying for isn't good enough for you. Got it? Uh, yes, and they have talked a little bit about him, just very, very little, about one minute saying they were all shocked. One of them started to cry a little bit and saying that he's suspended, and that's that for now.
Good morning, Speaker.
Let's wait for the public to talk about it.
Sign up under and the items you would like to speak on?
My name is Ernest Moore. I think the only thing I'll be able to cover today is a public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
I have set up a support group for the victims of the LA Superior Court's probate department. I'm here today to actually to, to demand some actions from the city attorney, and that I need to speak to the city attorney. I am also a victim of the probate court here in Los Angeles, Los Angeles, at the Stanley Moss Courthouse. This involves real estate fraud and elder abuse. I also have some issues with some incidents that I've had with LAPD.
Everybody.
In downtown LA.
Got issues with everything.
To talk to Kevin DeLeone about that. Also, today I'd like to make a police report about the incident that was recorded with the other council members involving Kevin DeLeone. Those were felony crimes.
It's not a felony.
Thank you very much, sir.
Wasn't a, that assault was not a felony. With a fucking fat dummy. Go home, dude. You know who's the happiest right now though, right? KDL is the happiest. All the heat's off of him. Mr. Sacks right there, baby, in the, in the jean shirt.
Jeffrey Delshod, general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Uh, around 2015, uh, within downtown Los Angeles, I was arrested by LAPD after going to the law firm of O'Melveney Myers and, uh, screwing up their operations a little bit. I had an issue or I continue to have an issue with, uh, some of the big legal firms in LA. I feel like perhaps they should be receiving some of this George Gascon love as well. Um, anyways, in the course of that, I was, uh, in the LAPD Metropolitan Detention Center, which is where they take you generally when you're arrested downtown.
Yeah, when you don't leave places that you're not supposed to be.
It was not cool, and it wasn't that great an experience. Anyways, um, there was, uh, incident shortly after I was there where there was a woman named Wakisha Wilson, who you may recall, who was, uh, said to be found dead in her cell. Uh, I feel that this, uh, in the light of whatever is going on, is something that people continue to have, uh, questions about and should be kept in the, kept in the context or whatever.
Let me guess, Lakisha, Wakisha was killed by the LAPD too, even though the LAPD is not in the jail system, right? It's the Sheriff Department. But let me guess, LAPD killed her too. I know. Fucking terrible. I got arrested because I wouldn't leave the lawyer's office and I had to go to jail and I didn't like it.
Morning favela and, uh, morning baby favela. I'd like to speak on general public.
Favela and baby favela?
That's great.
Another one bites the dust. For the second time in less than a year, a scandal has dethroned a member of council leadership, and you were warned you shouldn't be stunned.
Yep.
Back in 2017, Daniel Gus reported on the bigamy. Back a year after that, Emily Albert Reyes on the failure to recuse. Beyond that, current price stared down the raid on Weezer, DWP, and indictment of Englander and continued the racket. I routinely pointed out at these meetings, going back to 2020, when the FPPC clarified their guidance, that he was continuing to ignore their requirements for proper recusal. You all watched silently, even after MRT was indicted.
Yeah, they have the Metro Detention Center. I'm guessing they killed her too. The jailers are sheriffs.
Times did I bring this up? You know I'm not wrong. You had those conversations with him, and wherever you are, Kevin DeLeone, you're next.
Because it's ran by the county, not the city.
Similar votes with you. One of them even includes a motion, so resign now while you still can.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Resign. Like, he ain't resigning. You know he ain't going there. Why are you guys busy asking him to resign? He's been there over a year after. Uh-oh, under over 12.
I signed up for.
And the items you'd like to speak on?
I signed up for 27, the reward motion, and then general comment.
Okay, I'm saying under.
Two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Um, on the rewards, um, this is just a attempt to, you know, you're just trying to reward snitches, um, you know. The criminal justice system is awful and nobody should be put into it. No one should abolish the prisons, abolish the police. There shouldn't be any, um, rewards, um, you know, we should, like, reinvest, invest in things that will actually keep people safe. All right, general comment. Um, so Paul, how was your, um, meeting with Kevin DeLeone and Nury Martinez and Gil Sadiel last night? Where you're discussing who you're gonna install instead of, um, instead of actually, um, listening, actually taking input from CD9 as to who should be the council member for that district? Um, so, yeah, that's what happened in, um, with CD10. Um, now Heather's turned out to be, I think, a little bit less supportive of Nury, Gil, and KDL than Ron Herrera than I thought she'd be. But, um, but, you know, that is what happened in, um, 20, that is what happened after Mark Ridley Thomas, and it needs to not happen again. Um, you should have a special election, um, and see, see who CD9 wants to be the council member, rather than just picking some random person that will then run for, um, reelection and use, try to use the power of incumbency to, um, you know, to, so that she'll just be in for years.
Not bad. 15 ums in three minutes. 15 ums in three minutes. Not bad. That's one every 10 seconds, basically. Oh, look at this. He's got a dick on his back. I want you to look at his back when he turns. He's got a dick on his back.
Um, items 27, 28, 29, and 30, and general public comment.
Okay, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Mike Greenspan, the Jew who won't go back to Florida, the anti-Semitic, anti-Christ Catholics. Let's start over here with the rewards. Oh, boy, here we go again, 27. These rewards, last time I think one of them got paid, that cunt Janet Han from Board of Supervisors was here on the city council, and John Walsh, rest in peace, was still alive. And after all, he always talked about snitches get stitches. People aren't going to come forward because they're afraid. And so when one of these rewards actually got paid out, that fat pig Paul Caress was doing the in-your-face John Walsh. He didn't quite say those words, but his actions indicated that. And that was a long time ago, over 10 years ago. Now, let's go to another item. Um, oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
28, more stuff for Lee. What's the old saying? It's not what you know, it's who you know, and he's been around since Englander was around. He was his chief deputy. And of course, buddy-buddy with all the pigs, so he gets everything he wants, whether he needs it or not. Now, let's go to 29. Jewish Heritage Month. It's one of my favorites. Why? Because we need to talk about the issue of the country clubs that have no Jews. And the whole irony, yeah, you got 200,000. Donald Trump doesn't care if you're black, you're Jewish, he just cares about your 200,000. But in Palm Beach County, go to the North Part Everglades, well, if you're black or Jewish, you aren't joining. And guess what? There's another place that has no Jews, and it's, I'll make it a little more famous, Tebow's Timmaquana Country Club. You see, the guy who mentions Jesus all the time is the same goon that would actually bodily throw Jesus from the dining room if he tried to get some Christmas dinner because he's Jewish. I'm sorry, Mr. Christ, our country club only serves its Christian members. No Christmas dinner for you. Remember, the DWP has its goons and the Christians have theirs, and planner Tim Tebow's one of them. So he's a white collar planner. Now, what else?
Fucking Tim Tebow. I always knew he was a bad guy.
We're going to.
Fucking Tim Tebow.
We want to get rid of all the oil so everybody can be on electric cars. Well, not everybody can afford $40,000 to $50,000 to get an electric car. Let's go through Princess Katie's district, which before that belonged to Paul Caress, and pick that money. Pick the money off the Jewish money trees to actually pay for this thing, because money doesn't grow on trees. But we seem to think that it does, so go right ahead, pick the money off the trees, and I'll go to general public comment.
Such an idiot.
I think that was your general public.
No, that was not. That was my item. One minute. One minute.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, now, we are still in queer pride month. I'm from Florida. I don't say gay, so we say queer. Okay, well, one thing happened years ago. Guy would let a queer give him a blowjob for cigarettes. The guy's white trash. I'll say that outright, but let's put some class to the white trash. He did it for one pack. Look, give the goy a carton. I don't care if you're favela. I don't care if you're Glenn Day. I don't care if you're Eric Garcetti, or Mike Bonin, or Mitchell Farrell, or whoever else that, you know, galpering. Give the goy a carton. Show some class. That's all. Your queer pride should come out and give him a fair wage. This person did it for a 50 cent pack of cigarettes when the minimum wage was a dollar 60 an hour, i.e. one-third of the minimum wage. Pay him decently for a blowjob.
Hey, 50 cent blowjobs for everybody. Look at the dick on his back. Look at the cock on his back. No joke. Look at the penis. It's got a penis spray painted on his back.
I don't see Mr. Spindler, but I think he signed up as well. If he is, he can speak as well.
Please, Mr. Spindler, where are you at? Get your ass up in here. Oh, Mr. Sacks, he's coming up. My fucking favorite. Let's go. Here we go, ladies and gentlemen. Mister Arnold Sacks, who got jacked yesterday, he's speaking today.
Good morning, Speaker. If you could please tell us the items you would like to speak on?
Um, I think I, I think I signed up for a public comment, and the item's open for public hearings.
Okay, so the items that are open for public comment are 27.
My hero.
Yeah, I know.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
So what am I doing first? The item?
Please start with the items.
Okay, um, let's see. I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilman Blumenthal and, um, Councilman Lee for promoting, um, Jewish American Month. It's, uh, um, it's very important. In, in three weeks, we'll be celebrating July 4th, which is when the Declaration of Independence was supposedly signed, and then the Constitution followed later with the Bill of Rights. And I don't believe the Bill of Rights has been changed, so I don't believe that the first 10, uh, parts of the Bill of Rights, which are part of America's history, have been vetoed. So I don't believe that any religion should be discontinued. Judaism's been around for almost 3,000 years. There's very few cultures that have been around as long as that. China has had a culture that's been around for over 3,000 years. There's no other cultures that are along, have been around as long as those two. They're very similar, but they're different. But they are very similar in the length of time they've been around. And it's very important to recognize Chinese culture and the communities that make up the city. Some of them have no representation at all.
Speaker, this sounds like general public comment. Would you like to speak to the items or would you like to move?
To the items. I'm speaking on heritage. I'm speaking on the Constitution. People are trying to get rid of religion. They're promoting Malcolm X. And why are they promoting Malcolm X when they, when Malcolm X had nothing to do with any, any Mexicans? Any dancing, any vatos. Malcolm X was a cold-blooded killer in New York City in the early se, in the early 70s. He would have been a liked Obamacare, because it would have provided low-cost.
Sounds like general public comment, so.
Oh, okay, that's fine. So, um, this is from Thursday, April 19th. It mentions Mayor Karen Bass as a member of Congress. Right here, newspaper. As a member of Congress, I'm surprised she didn't know who Barack Obama was. And the most important piece of legislation came out of his administration was the Affordable Care Act, which Mark Ridley Thomas tried to do away with.
Not today, John.
How did he get the vote? This one says county's homeless plan rejected. Somebody was talking about homelessness. When did it become homelessness? This one mentions current price. $30 an hour proposed for hotel workers. Who's gonna take the leadership from current price to raise the money? Where the fuck you gonna get the money from? This one's mentions a migrant farm worker going on a hunger str, a hunger walk to raise money for low-income people, which is exactly what Affordable Care Act would have done. And they said, fuck you. Mark Ridley Thomas said, I'm not paying. Fuck them.
By the way, Mark Ridley Thomas was the first councilman this year to get federally indicted, and now current price is the second one to be federally indicted. So, yeah, that's what he was referring to, and that's what I was referring to earlier. So don't think that the rest of these fools are clean, because they're not. Just a matter of time. Tik Tok.
To say we had our challenges, so I know what the people of CD9 is going through, and I just want to say I believe justice will prevail, and we will get through this. I want to thank, um, Harris Dawson for his motion. It's really about the people of CD9, so I just want to thank you all for keeping CD9 front and center as we work our way through this issue, and we will work our way through it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Very, very much, yeah.
Herman, come on up.
Yeah, Herman, come on up, you see his fucking face when he said it? Herman, come on up. Not Mr. Herman. Taking his time, too, looking a little slow.
Good morning, Speaker, which items would you like to speak on?
Viewer discretion is advised.
Start the clock.
Start the clock, hurry up. He's being an asshole.
Yeah, I want to talk about the Juju oil lants on item thirty. No more wells, no more lamps, thank you, Bob Bloomfield. And then I'm gonna talk about threats and violence here in the city of Los Angeles, because certain people don't believe in our First Amendment, and we're not protected by our consul and the pink-faced dictator about violence and threats for fifty thousand dollar payments. Now, I want to see a list of all the payments you've made, pink-faced dictator, because we want to know whether or not snitches get stitches, just like those two individuals, the moron from Canoga Park, and that dumb Armenian that called in making violence and threats on item twenty-seven regarding...
What's he talking about?
A reward offer for six months of the death of Carly Phillips Tarshman. And then, what happened to my time, fool? That was only two minutes.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak on? You've already used your general public comment.
I signed up on all items and non-agenda public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items, you have already used your general public comment.
You bitch. Dirty nigger attorney, all right. Let me talk again about item thirty-two and the trees. Why do we need trees? So that when they're strangling you...
I can't breathe!
You'll know why.
Speaker, item thirty-two is not open for public comment, the items that are open are twenty-seven through thirty.
Okay, so let's go back to twenty-seven, fool. Regarding threats and violence, again, the Armenian nation want to call me a Turk? Well, this Turk supports the Turk Revolution. We are an army like the United States of America, and we take threats seriously.
Speaker, this has nothing to do with item number twenty-seven.
I'm getting to my issue on item twenty-seven, Mr. Attorney. I'm trying to make a picture for the world to understand the clarity of giving people rewards for being fucking snitches, you fucking idiot, moron, asshole, douchebag, listen. So, again, console file number twenty-three zero zero ten, suck Fafa one, because, again, current price...
Spindler's up there, look at him.
He's a fucking moron.
Look at Spindler.
And then I go into item twenty-eight, District Twelve, where is Lee? I see the Oreo man, Mr. Bloomfield there, yeah, you, because we're talking about funding abatements. Well, if you would clearly make it clear, Juju, if we open up the oil wells, we can clearly have weed abatement and maybe smoke one for those types of abatement. Other than that, abate the fucking nuisance of homelessness, abate the nuisance of the eyesores on the sidewalk, abate the fucking Armenian who calls in talking about payments.
Speaker, you've received multiple warnings to stay on topic, so we are going to move on to the next speaker.
I'm from Porter Ranch, nigga.
Next speaker, please.
I'm from Porter Ranch. Ah, here comes the LAPD.
You have moved off topic multiple times, so please move on to the next speaker.
Ah, didn't like that. Do you imagine if they had to give him five to ten to twenty minutes to talk? Could you imagine how crazy shit would be?
Mr. Spindler, be quiet. Be quiet, Mr. Spindler, you'll have an opportunity to talk when you're at the microphone, otherwise be silent in these chambers.
He's so pissed right now, look at his face.
Good morning, Speaker.
Oh, look who's here.
Which items would you like to speak on?
Yes, I'd like to speak on, nigga, item twenty-seven, nigga, item twenty-eight, nigga, item twenty-nine, and the general motherfucking public comment.
Thank you, Jim Eaton.
Three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment, you may begin.
That's right, motherfucker. Now, twenty-seven, snitches get stitches, that is the name of the game in the ghetto. Not in CD eleven with Tracy Park, no. Over there in CD eight is where the snitches get the stitches. Carlisle Philip, Tashima Willie, and there's some of fifty thousand dollars for two niggas. They gotta be worth at least two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to take the risk of going to these motherfucking cops. They're getting paid off half the time by this motherfucking city, and tell them who done this shit, eh, gonna happen. Who did it to goddamn Tupac? We still don't have that reward, son.
Tupac.
And who framed OJ Simpson? We don't have that reward, do we? No. You motherfuckers are full of shit, fuck goddamn fucking twenty-seven. When we get to item twenty-eight, the Porter Ranch of weed abatement, that's right, you gotta smoke that fucking weed. Woo, that weed is good over there in CD twelve, they got a lot of nice places to buy weed. No, they're talking about the, the brush. Oh, they talking about the bad weeds, the kind I can't sell. Now, I want that shit cut down immediately, effective now. Seventy-two hundred and fifty dollars for white motherfuckers to have nice curves. What happened to CD six? How come these Jew motherfuckers in Northridge get their nice weed abatement, but niggas over in Van Nuys, niggas over in Reseda with Bob Bourbonblood, and how come Van Nuys look like a pile of dog shit overrun, but this motherfucker Stafford Lee, known as John B., can get weed abatement? How come niggas can't get the same services? Well, it's because they're all getting indicted. Well, that's not fair, but I want this motion to mend it to that. And then we get to the Heritage Month. These Jew motherfuckers on Jewish American Heritage Month, corrupting our black folk, corrupting our Asian folk, making them into little thieves, standing around this horseshoe, selling out all of our land that we are entitled to as reparations, so they can sell it to the Israelites and permanently give us EBT cards in return. We were promised an acre of land and a mule, and we're getting shit. Now, fuck them Hebrew motherfuckers.
General public comment.
And we get to current price. Let us bow our heads and pray for this motherfucker, he need our help.
Dear heavenly Father, please...
That is a hand puppet.
Make sure that current price does not snitch out Janice Han, we love Janice Han, and make sure that she does not go and rat out Mayor Butts. He brought the Clippers, he brought the Rams, he brought the Chargers to the poor city of Inglewood to make it the economic powerhouse that it's gonna be. Please, Heavenly Father, don't have him snitch, have him remain silent and go through the trial process. He been stealing since he was born, and he should steal now, because every black person that steals should be allowed to as reparations for all this shit we put up with. Yes, my Lord, thank you.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Your time's expired, have a seat and be silent for the remainder of the meeting, or you'll be removed.
Oh, he's mad, he didn't like that one, let him steal.
Your one and only warning. For the members of the public who don't come to our meetings to see these performances every day, I don't do this all the time, but I do really want to apologize that you have to tolerate the idiotic, bigoted, disgusting, racist comments of the last two speakers that we hear every single day just about. So I apologize that this council chambers and, and all of you had to be exposed to that, but...
He's mad.
...what we're obligated to tolerate.
Difference is, is those people?
Unfortunately, pursuant to the First Amendment. So, with that, we will close, those speakers who are at home, uh, uh, here in the council chambers, and we'll go next to the speakers.
They're already closing comment in the room.
One, one moment, please.
The difference between those people is those people have enough balls and guts to get in front of a mic and speak in front of people how they feel. You motherfuckers get behind a closed door and talk about everybody, then get caught, and then cry about it when you're caught.
All right, let's go ahead.
That's the difference there, Paul.
First caller on the phone, please.
You got it, Paul?
First caller.
They got balls and guts, unlike you, Paul. They got nuts and guts, unlike you, Paul. Like him or not, I don't like what he has to say, but at least he had the guts to say it.
We can barely hear you, Speaker, if you can bring the microphone closer and speak up a bit.
Big difference, I don't agree with what he's saying, but at least he had the guts to say it, you don't.
Can you hear me?
Not to anybody's face.
Yes, we can hear you now. Which items would you like to speak on?
General public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute.
I just want to point out the indignance with which dictator King Kirkorian...
Stacy.
...just spoke about the First Amendment, our right to free speech. I understand that a lot of the things said in chambers are racist and bigoted, and that is our right. And the fact that you say you unfortunately have to honor our constitutional right to speech, considering the circumstances we're dealing with under this body, is pretty terrifying and striking, and everybody should be taking note. I wish you had a modicum of that passion about working with racist Kevin DeLeon. This is abhorrent, and when Paul Caretz said fuck you to protesters protesting racist Kevin DeLeon, no one said anything, and I'm calling out you, Nithia, you know better. Fuck you.
Next speaker, please.
Guys, is that machine loud?
Next speaker.
And I just hit that up.
What items would you like to speak on?
Because it sounds loud to me on this side, because it's the other machine I haven't fucked with yet. Just want to know.
Public comment.
Or is it okay?
You have one minute.
Well, thank you.
It's fine, okay, good.
Sounds like somebody missed the threat there about the tree and hanging, choking on the tree. I would have the LAPD arrest that man. That sounded like a threat to me. So, that's just my thing watching in from City Hall. But second price, um, same situation, Marissa Alcaraz, she's running for city council, working for him now. How's it gonna affect her? Where, uh...
Put a tampon in him, Nate, that'll help you.
And get this corruption out of City Hall, who stands up and says they were involved with Nury Martinez? Or is it gonna come out in the news and we go through this all again? District Nine, are you gonna go ahead and appoint someone, Mr. President?
Never mind, I'm low, I'm high, never mind, I don't even why I ask you guys.
Is it gonna cost eight million dollars? Or democracy's no longer in LA, because you're saving eight million dollars in time.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what you...
Thank you, next caller, please.
Next caller, what items would you like to speak on?
Hello, good morning, it's Ernie. I'm just public comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Thank you. Um, once again, uh, we see ourselves in this corruption mode, and Hernandez...
Thanks, Paul Goots.
...publicly admitted, uh, last week, that you are under the desk of the developers, um, at the Fourth Street property of Morris Knight, because you wanted an extension. Obviously, that is corrupt, and Harris Dawson, you're just as bad as prices. Kevin DeLeon, another one bites the dust, and Paul Kirkorian, oh, that's right, as a landlord and as a, um, success to the developers, you vote yes on developing. So, again, all of you, um, we don't have to vote you out, you're all gonna be in jail together, have a great day.
That's true.
Next speaker, please.
We only got six speakers, right, guys?
Next speaker.
In chambers?
What items would you like to speak on?
I think it was six, am I correct?
Uh, good morning, this is Brock Lander's private investigator, I would like to speak on, uh, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and, uh, general public comment, please.
Okay, you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment, please begin with the items.
All right, thank you. Um, twenty-seven, snitches get stitches, it's a lot of tough talk from a bunch of people that wanted to fund the police, maybe if there was more community involvement with the police, we wouldn't need programs like this. Or if young black men weren't killing each other at record numbers, we wouldn't need programs like this. And to answer the speaker before about OJ, it was his son, he asked OJ if he could use his car, OJ told him to go ax his mom. Twenty-eight, I'm all for bush abation, abatement, when the bushes get too big and unwieldy and makes everything look untidy and leads to less abatement. We don't need to completely abate the bushes, I think that we could do some sculpting, maybe some designs, and I'd be happy to lend my trimming services. Uh, for general public comment, uh, to comment on number four, when are we gonna get a smoke and scan skate park? We could include volleyball courts and call them Stink Sandbox. And from last, last week's meeting, I think we need to ask for a refund from the Ethics Department. Uh, you know, I mean, unless the members are like, uh, part of a Make-A-Wish Kids group and want to be part of the, uh, local city government. Randy, come see Daddy Brock for your birthday spankings, and I think it says a lot about how you guys are treating the public today, because you're mad somebody in your own clo- club got busted. Eric Previn for city council, we need some dignity, and people with a backbone, there, thank you.
I love it.
Next speaker, please.
I love it.
Next speaker, what items would you like to speak on?
I love it. Good old Brock Lander, shout out to Brock.
Yes, we can hear you, which items would you like to speak on?
Um, it looks like it's gonna be general public comment today.
Okay, you have one minute.
I turned it up a little bit, Venom.
Surprise, 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 another council member charged with, uh, embezzlement, perjury, conflict of interest, how interesting is that? The fourth council member in lost city of Los Angeles history is, has been caught, and if he gets indicted, he's gonna go to prison. And guess what? He's gonna join, he's gonna become a cellmate with, uh, former council member Mark Ridley Thomas, um, in the same jail cell, how interesting is that? If current price gets convicted, he's gonna have a cellmate named Mark Ridley Thomas. Wow, isn't that interesting? How, what a shame this, you guys have brought to this city. Enough is enough with the corruption. This is why people don't...
Speaker, your time has expired.
Next speaker, we don't want to hear you, see, you start talking about corruption.
What items would you like to speak on?
You're getting hung up on.
Good morning, uh, general public comment, please.
Okay, you have one minute.
Yes, thank you, good morning, council members, good morning, Paul Kirkorian, President, um, regarding, uh, allegation against current price, Junior, for the District Attorney's Office, um, I believe that at this time we should postpone, um, appointing Marquis Harris Dawson as, uh, president pro temp. Uh, I believe that we should do a vet process of all city council members.
Oh, so they want Marquis, the, the black dude in the gray suit?
Being compromised.
To be the pro temp now?
...by these corrupt charges. And finally, I'd like the city council to strengthen the independence of the Ethics Commission, please, um, if you could do, uh, genderized admittance of president, uh, to strengthen the independence of Ethics Commission, thank you, I use the balance of my time, sir.
They're gonna love, they're gonna love current price in jail.
Next caller, what items would you like to speak on? Speak with the last four digits, three, six, eight, six?
I ain't damnin', it's too early in the morning, fucking ten o'clock in the morning, eleven in the morning.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak on?
Dabbin', speak on, crazy.
Public comment, Bobo Junior.
Okay, you have one minute.
Yeah, uh, real quickly, you know, this is, uh, what you call the chickens coming home to roost, is it not? We've been telling you, um, time and time again, but you already knew this, you already knew what you, um, engage in, you know what you engage in, you know who you are, so there is no surprise to any of this. The one thing I will say is Stafford B., AKA John Lee, Paul Kirkorian, Monica Rodriguez, and the rest corrupt cabal, Kevin DeLeon, can't forget him, we're coming for you next, Paul Kirkorian, we know your shady dealings with Rafi Aslanian, the landlord who's now in jail for trying to murder two people, so we got you next, have a great day.
One more speaker, please, next speaker.
One more speaker, that's it!
What items would you like to speak on?
They ain't even buttoned on an hour, they're already trying to cut everything in less than an hour, you see how that... They ain't even buttoned on an hour. They're already trying to cut everything in less than an hour. You see how that happens? They don't want you talking out. They don't want to hear the truth.
Byron calling us a concerned resident of the city of Los Angeles, living here for over twenty five years. CD six, CD ten, CD fourteen, and now CD nine. At this rate, uh, at the rate that all of you continue to be indicted and are voted out, pretty soon we won't have quorum to run any meetings or do any business. Um, I'll take baby Fable over dinosaur Fable, but I guess he's busy. Fable's busy trying to become deputized so that he could be named pro temp and thus becoming maybe pink face dictator. Oh, Kirkorian, by the way, Monica's probably out there lining up votes against you, but maybe we do need attention leadership. We have gone through three different leadership in the last six months. Let's, let's keep at it. Again, instead of your apologizing for racist comments, maybe we just need someone to, that can better run this meeting. Um, Marquis, you're in danger.
Thanks, Live Love.
Naming you pro temp, uh, the way that these white people and Latinos are gonna look out for themselves. You're probably gonna be next, but hopefully it'll be Stafford B, Officer Tracy, or the myriad of people or candidates.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Your time's expired. That will close public comment.
We're out of here.
On all items and close general public comment.
We're out of here, guys.
Next on the agenda.
Mr. President, council may now vote on item twenty seven.
What happens when one of them gets busted? Quick. Fifty one minutes from start to finish. Fifty one. What did we get? Forty minutes of talk? Maybe, maybe, maybe?
Tabulate the votes.
Ten eyes.
Dirty motherfuckers. Dirty. Yeah. Hit it, hit it and quit it. Just hurry up and get up out of here. So the, so the fucking so the public can't say anything to us about our corruption. Everybody who starts talking about corruption, next call. Next call. Next call.
Ten eyes.
Oh, there's callers. Don't, don't tell me that. There's plenty of callers left in that queue and there's people in there that want to talk, I bet.
So on that item, members.
It's sissy lalas, that's it.
Let's go ahead and open the roll.
I mean, dirty as dirty gets.
Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Dirty as dirty gets.
Ten eyes.
Very good, thank you. That will bring us next to item number twelve, which was called special by council member Hernandez. Council member, did you?
Yeah, Diaz. He was the one that would sit down right now. Right now, as soon as the callers started, he was the one that would tap in for this dude. This dummy would go in the back. And it was the other guy. He was the president pro temp. So now what they want to do is Marquis, uh, Harris Dawson, the black dude, the young guy who's bald in the gray suit, he was, he's just right there, actually. He, he's the one they want to take right away. Don't even get a vote, nothing. We're, we're just gonna install him. Instead of just asking what the people want and what everybody else in the quorum wants. And that's how they do it.
Council President, um, and thank you so much, uh,
Sleazy as fuck, Sal.
Yosloski for doing this with me.
Why he gotta be black?
Colleagues, I want to share a little bit about Avon's life and impact on Los Angeles. I was fortunate enough to meet and work with Avon on judicial accountability, uh, to witness his dedication to our communities. Avon is an LA County public defender.
Probably, Terry, we'll find out. Still so new.
During his free time.
I mean, two hours after the meeting yesterday, Terry, he got indicted.
Who are interested in pursuing.
So he knew, he knew something was up.
He is an active member of the Los Angeles County Public Defenders Union, Local one four eight.
We didn't know it, but that was the last time we'd see him.
More importantly, though, he's a beloved son, brother, uncle, and friend. We are standing in solidarity with Avon's colleagues and family today and asking that our federal government do everything in its power to bring him back home quickly and safely. Thank you so much. And I just want to uplift that Avon's family is here as well. Um, if, um, and I know that they'll be speaking in a bit.
You know, I just say, it's, you know. They point fingers at all these people like Mr. Herman, Mr. Spindler, and I don't think any of us agree what these guys say. We know they're off their rocker. We knew. We, we enjoy it cause it's funny. But they have the audacity to point fingers and tell you how bad those folks are when realistically, it, it's just like every day in life, the news. They're busy pointing the finger at one person while they gotta defend themselves. And what you're not realizing is the finger pointer is worse than the person they're pointing the finger at.
It was.
Cause they're saying the same shit Mr. Herman, Mr. Spindler are saying. It's getting caught on tape behind closed doors. They just don't have the guts to say it out loud like Mr. Herman and Mr. Spindler and Mr. Sax.
Impeccable character, uh, which is, uh, no doubt a testament to his family and friends, uh, some of whom are with us here today. Uh, he spent the last twenty years, uh, as Councilwoman Hernandez said, um, mentoring young people. He's an active and important member of the public defender's office at the county of Los Angeles. Uh, he's just a, an incredibly decent, kind human being. Uh, in March of last year, he was on vacation, actually, with, with a friend near the Colombian Venezuelan border when he was stopped by armed men and asked to pay a bribe. He couldn't. And when they found out that he was a US citizen, he was kidnapped and handed over to the Venezuelan government.
I don't know if he's running though.
It's like a nightmare, right? It's absolute nightmare. And he's being detained right now in a maximum security prison because they suspect him of being a spy, which is patently absurd.
Um, yeah.
And what he's going through is, is nothing short of, of totally horrifying. And it's unjust and we have to do everything we can.
Sure.
Uh, to bring him home.
What did this guy do? What did he do?
Why this resolution today calls on the Biden administration and the LA delegation to the United States Congress to do everything in their power to expedite negotiations with the Venezuelan government. And I ask for your support. And I'd like to call up his family who's here today. And I don't know, Parrish, if you want to come up as well.
Julian Assange, I don't know.
Parrish Knox is a colleague also from UCLA Law School.
I don't know, we'll see.
Welcome.
Thank you, city council members. Um, my name's Henry Martinez, the younger brother of Avon Hernandez. Uh, as you guys may or may not know, he's been held, uh, fourteen months, fourteen and a half months in Venezuela in a makeshift prison, um, practically solitary confinement. Uh, we ask all city members to, uh, take an extra step, reach to the Biden administration and have them do, uh, use all tools necessary.
For you what, yesie?
To bring my brother, um, Avon Hernandez home.
Look at the puppet.
Has dedicated tirelessly to the marginalized community here in Los Angeles, serving homeless, uh, drug, um, add, add addiction, addicted residents, um, mental ill.
Why are they closing in? So you don't see the puppet?
Just is always willing to stop what he's doing to help anyone who seeks.
That's not me, that's them.
So, uh, we ask all members to do everything that they can and, and reach to.
Let's flip it this way then.
As soon as possible. Um, thank you. And my dad would like to share a few words.
Look at, look at Mr. Herman. He's got something on his shirt. Mr. Herman has something on his shirt. He's trying to get it in the camera.
Thank you very much for inviting us and helping my son.
Trying to cross into their country illegally, huh?
I just like to tell you, uh, how great my son is and not because he's my son, but I need help to bring him home. Uh, let me tell you how my son is dedicating his life. He's been studying so hard to be who, who it is. And, uh, let me say something about when he start working in this court. He always come home and, uh, study like, like, like one of you guys. He always come home studying his case. He fall asleep on the couch. And, uh, I wake up one in the morning and I tell my son, come on, my son, go rest. And month later, I got tired to see him all the time like that.
Mr. Herman.
Mostly think Herman is, he being studied so hard to be who it is. And, uh, I told him, Mijo, get another job. Uh, don't kill yourself. I mean, you're working so hard. Get another job, get another job on the side. You're gonna make more money and work left. And he got upset with me.
Heart wrenching story and these two assholes are, look at them. Look at them.
My respect, don't tell me that again. I like what I'm doing. I don't do it for money, Pop. You always think about money. I'm sorry to say that, but I don't do it for money. I like to help people. And that's one of the reasons I begging you guys to help me because he doesn't deserve to be there. And also, Herman, because I feel so guilty. Him to be there, he don't want to go to Venezuela. He, Colombia, sorry. He asked me, Dad, let's go to El Salvador. I'm from El Salvador. And, uh, in that moment, I have some hernia and I can go out. And he begging me, Dad, let me go to El Salvador with you, at least for two week. Please, let's go. I say, no, Mijo, I can't. I, I have a hernia. I, I mean, I don't want to go there because if they, something's happened to me, it's not like here, they, they take care of you right away. He goes, don't worry about it, Papa. We're gonna take care of you. And I say, no, and that's why I feel so guilty.
Save America?
Him to be there. Cause if he, I was accepting him to go to my country. He was here doing his job. He was in this situation and I feel so guilty. Please, please, guys, help him. Help him to bring, to come home with us. And thank you, thank you very much, everybody, for listening to us and helping us. Thank you so much. I like to tell you many history about him, but, uh, I feel like my English is not really good. I don't know if you guys understand me. But, uh, my son is being working, helping people around the world, helping young people, helping. And later, later, later on.
Can we trade his son for Brittany Griner?
Same team. In the courthouse. He keep using.
I'm down.
A whole car, I give it to him. And I always begging him, Mijo, let me buy you another car. He doesn't wanna, he say, no, Pop, I'm okay. He always has problem with the car when he come to work. Until he buy his new car. And, uh, please, please, I need your help. Help him, please. Thank you very much, everybody, for listening to me.
Because this was, this is not a time thing. Uh, he gets, he gets, uh, all the time he wanted.
Bring Avon home.
Bring Avon home, please. Thank you so much. God bless.
It's kinda like when they honor the people.
Very much for sharing, uh, your story and, and your pain and, and your anguish. And, uh, making us all feel that, uh, as well.
Yeah.
And I'm so grateful that our.
That we felt that.
Moving forward with this, uh, effort to try to bring more attention to this case and to bring more action uh, from the Biden administration to, to make sure that we bring Avon home. Uh, does anybody else, uh, wish to be heard on this matter? If not.
See, that's what's crazy. That's why, imagine all these people that are coming into our country just freely. That's not, they're not getting put into jail for fourteen months. In fact, they're getting money and a plane ticket to wherever they want to go. And that's why I'm trying to explain to people, you can't do that in any other country. Go to their country and, and go, go and see if you walk right in like that dude. Spend fourteen months, plus.
The desk is clear, sir.
Very good. Members, uh, are there any announcements?
Yes, Curran, you're a piece of shit.
First start with, uh, the announcement, very important to the people of the one five and our entire city that today we are celebrating Councilmember Tim McCosker's birthday. Councilmember McCosker, happy birthday.
Boy, we're so happy.
And Sharon So's birthday today, too.
Oh, Sharon, happy birthday.
Birthday twins.
Thank you.
Look, Mr. Spindler.
History of Los Angeles. Members, any other, uh, announcements? All right, do we have, uh, motions for adjournment? Councilmember Harris Dawson, if we could all please rise.
I don't think we've ever seen a quicker meeting, guys. One minute, one hour, two minutes, and they're almost done.
And it, uh, is with deep pain and sadness that we stand again.
That sucks, Bionic, cause that means he's not gonna be in Glendale. I was hoping he'd be in Glendale on the twentieth.
Incredibly young person taken away from us.
But I hope he's safe out there. I'll be watching him.
Mr. Quincy Darnell Reese passed a few nights ago after being shot outside a party near Seventy Fourth and Hobart. He was a sixteen year old junior at Crenshaw High School. Uh, he began playing basketball at our city parks, uh, in our city youth leagues and travel leagues.
This is the guy they want for pro temp, guys. He'll be taking over for the other guy who just got caught yesterday.
To get along with people and to bring people together. They nicknamed him Batman on the court. And at the time of his death, he.
Where's BLM? Oh, they ain't showing up.
Held a three point four GPA.
They ain't showing up because he wasn't shot by a white guy or a cop. So it doesn't matter. Remember that.
Uh, to attend, uh, and play, uh, to attend school and to play basketball. Our thoughts and prayers are with Quincy's mother, Ms. Amens, or his father, Quincy Reese Senior. A host of, uh, friends and loved ones and, um, you know, just to shout, uh, out to our community. Uh, Quincy is yet another example of our greatest.
I'm not on tonight, Jamie.
Of what our young people can become.
I'll be on Friday for sure.
And also a reminder.
Both shows, two shows on Friday. Morning for this stuff and then Friday night. I just wasn't on last night because we were on the day before. And I wanted to take care of all the sound stuff and it took me three and a half hours to go through that one machine.
Because in a neighborhood, we're just down the block.
Twelve hundred and thirty eight drops in one machine.
Somehow another person finds a gun.
You have to fix each one individually.
Takes this young person away from us. And so, may he rest in power and his, may his example, uh, live with us all.
Killer was fifty. Did they catch the person who shot him, May Dog? Thank you, Hoosier.
Very much, Councilmember Harris Dawson. Condolences, uh, are with him and his family.
Yeah, I want to go through and erase some stuff I saw in there too that I, I don't use. So make some room and put some new stuff in there too.
And this meeting is adjourned.
See, that's it. They're already done. What time is it? Wow, one hour and five minutes. And that's including me trying to fix the whole echo in and all that mess. Fucking A. Boy, oh boy, it was quick to get up out this joint today, guys. We gotta get out of here quick because, uh, yeah, he got caught and we don't want to hear much about anything. So we, we, we can't, yeah. Yeah. They were quick to get the fuck up out of there, son. Hmm, sucks, man. I really thought they would be, uh, upfront and honest, but we know how they are. Let's go look at the Bob guys. Hold on. Sheriff Bob Fletcher here live. St. Paul, Minnesota, rolling with the sheriff. Yeah, they, look, they, look, they know he's already been indicted. He's the second one to be federally indicted. Okay, on corruption charges, okay? And for, just to let you know, when I told you, remember, guys, I was showing you on the phone and you guys, okay, well, let's see it, this, you know, Damon's a liar a lot of times. That's probably his own news. So, yeah, and I wanted to prove it to you. Well, right after that, he announced that he is actually not going to stay. So he resigned. So he's not coming back. And they did put him on a suspension, which to me, that's how I was thinking, like, why would you put somebody on a suspension? When, um, they're, you know, they're not even there anymore. They've already given themselves up. You know what I mean? It's, it's, it's ridiculous. Uh, the, the president pro temp. The older black gentleman with like the white hair and the glasses who'd come in after the white guy with the pink face. It's only two of them. The white guy, the pink face is Paul, he's the president. And then you notice how he does the, you know, the, the in chambers and then all of a sudden they'll switch, if you don't notice, right when the callers start. And he'll be the one that handles the callers. And then when the callers are done, they'll switch back again. And he'll come up and then, you know, they'll get the meeting done and that's how they do it. It's just a flip flop, back and forth, you know? Tag, tag, you're in, kinda thing. Cause you know, it's really too much work to sit there for a whole fucking hour. Yeah, the guy that looks like Grady. Yeah, so Grady's gone. Grady's about to get, uh, arrested. So, uh, yeah, cause there's actually several charges. It's not one charge. It's, it's, it's a slew of charges. You know, not to say that it isn't, uh, you know, expected.
No, white, black sweatshirt, mostly blue, pink, blue jeans.
Why don't I hear the mic?
Go to incident two zero zero seven, thirty fourteen fifteen.
That's weird. Why don't I hear that? Can you guys hear the scanner mic? Cause I don't hear it.
It's always something now.
Cancel the one. Twenty four six three seven nine four three zero six seven nine no three vehicle.
Doesn't sound right. Yeah, it doesn't sound right.
At least on my end. At least I could work this out with you guys here.
All right, let's wait for the next call for a sec here. Did you he, did, no, I, I know you heard it, but did you hear it like you normally heard it? Does it sound exactly the same that you've always heard every time you came in here? Just asking that. We'll wait for the next one. Obviously, there's a. Let's see here. Be a good little time to test with you guys. Cause it just, it doesn't sound as clear for some reason in my ears. I mean, maybe it's the, I definitely have a faulty mic cable here. I mean, an earphone cable, cause I'm turning it and it's going from like stereo to mono. So I know there's a problem there. It sounded better than ever, huh? Hmm, okay. See, I don't hear it at all right now in my headphones. That's weird. Not hearing it at all in my headphones. Not hearing it at all in my headphones. Let's try that. Come on. It's kinda low. You gotta remember too, when we're talking about sound, everybody's listening to their computer at a different level. Some might be on ten, some might be on five, so. You know, for everybody to hear it the same way, they'd all have to be on five or ten. Man, I guess I hear it now. Try that. Let's wait for one more call. That sounds better. Yeah, I definitely need a new uh, a new uh, headphone connection, cause I can hear it's, it's staticky and when I'm moving it, it's going from stereo to mono right now. Right? There is the perfect spot. I can hear myself. And if I turn it at all, I can only hear out of one ear. So it's definitely, we need to, I need to get a new mic cable. But that's, you know, again, cause it's, I'm always pulling and turning and pulling on it, you know? Cables go bad. So it's just the headphone. Headphone cable, it's fucking playing, playing havoc. Let's go look at San Diego. Shout out to the San Diego webcam. At San Diego webcam, go check him out, man. Look at, there's the villainous shit, look, with the helicopter on the back. God damn, you know, you're ballin'. You're ballin', you're ballin', you're ballin'. Just, it's just crazy. Just staring at that shit is wild. Look, there's somebody on the deck too. Look, look, look in the back. They're walking the deck. Crew's on there. Man, that's wild as fuck, dude. Fucking matching helicopter on the back. Doctor Evil for sure. That's some Doctor Evil shit. I mean, the pirate ship is cool. Don't, don't trip. The pirate ship's pretty damn cool. But it ain't, it ain't the, it ain't the villainous James Bond fucking. Kidnapped.
In twenty-six places, this is a downtown twenty-six places, for those that he gets shot, said that female white carrying a two-year-old baby girl running from a suspect male white tattoos with earplugs, a t-shirt and blue jeans. Suspect vehicle is a black SUV with a ski ramp was last seen heading towards Washington on Pacific. Victim is on foot. Suspect is in a vehicle. Code three incident two zero three four, RD four two forty.
Hmm, let me try that too. I wanna see if I can make it a little more directional. Too much of a difference, but we'll see. Hmm, okay. Alright. Yeah, so now I gotta go through this other machine today, like I went through this whole one. And uh, hopefully, like I said, it's all back to normal. It's not blowing anybody's ears out, but it's, I want it as high as it can be without blowing everybody's ears out. You know what I mean, kinda thing? You don't want it too low. There's the aircraft carrier, that thing, dude. One jet, two jet, three jets, four jets, five, six, seven, I see, at least seven jets on that fucking thing. Seven tails that I can count. Pretty cool. Pretty fucking cool, man. USS Midway, is that the Midway? That's cool. Yeah, San Diego's nice, man. Even on an overcast day like this, it still looks beautiful, you know what I mean? Still beautiful. And I like it too, cause you know, fuck, ten minutes, you can be in Tijuana. You're a whole nother country having fun. And you pop back and forth. Well, I don't know about pop back and forth, thanks to the, thanks to all the traffic. Like those entry points are pretty bad sometimes. It might take you a fucking couple hours to get through one. Like it's that long. You know what I mean? Depending on how many cars they're searching and this, that, and the other. Depending on what day it is, you know, going down to San Diego on a Friday night, oof, it's rough. Yeah, San, San Ysidro borders. It's the most busy, I think, border crossing in, in the country, if I'm not mistaken. It's, it's pretty busy. What's up, Indigo? How are you? Take the tram? That's something I haven't done. I haven't taken the tram. Look at that. Yeah. Shit, yeah, another carrier?
Over white, thirty years, five nine two hundred.
Thing is huge, dude.
Twenty-two, twenty-four, TL twenty-two.
Fucking massive.
Westlake and Temple, Westlake and Temple. Code three incident two zero three two, RD two seventeen.
Fucking cranes everywhere.
Four fifteen man, possible gun, breed and first, knew a terror shop suspect melanoma, wearing sunglasses and a jogging suit, appears to be selling narcotics and has a gun in the pants, possible gun in the pants. Correction, incident two zero four five, RD four six four.
Guy with a gun? Tell him, E. Was that drop good? Was that at a perfect level? You almost died in Tijuana? It's perfect on your end, yes, he good. Kinda low on your end, Chad. But are you uh, kinda low listening, or are you full blast, Chad? It was quiet. Little low, a bit quiet, could have been louder. It's low. Jesus, alright. Alright, so let's test a little, ladies and gentlemen. We're gonna test a little bit. We're gonna try it again. That was the second one. So it's kind of good. Give us a little time to.
Requesting the next unit to hold.
To test a little bit.
And one oh five. To respond either direction. Requesting one unit to respond east of the alley and hundred and fifth. City was all the year, the consultative suicide to eight oh six, wished avenues, subject of female eighteen years. Code two incident two zero five zero, RD ten forty-seven.
Alright, here we go. This is the third time. It's not the gain, it's the volume. The gain has nothing to do with it. I'm just walking it up, so I don't blow you out. Okay, cause sometimes you can go up or down two, three decibels and it'll almost sound exactly the same to your ears. So I'd rather go down three decibels and not need them if we don't need them and keep it clear and clean. That way, if something happens, it doesn't blow people's ears out. One more turn? Okay, let's go. I'm gonna put one more up. I'm gonna kick it up one more time. Now, I'm gonna do the other machine. Now, the other machine. How, but let's do that one first, let's. And I could still go up higher. I'm, I'm not, I'm not at a hundred percent. And that's why you guys keep saying, well, your mic is louder than those. I understand that. I get it. I can put them up that high, I just don't want to. I don't wanna blow you out. How is it quieter than before? Stop it. Stop it. Definitely no louder. Louder again, but still low compared to you. One last time. Doesn't need a compressor. It's been good for fucking three fucking years. Jesus, doesn't need a preamp, doesn't need a compressor, don't need none of that. It just, needs people to just answer honestly and stop being dicks and people read, and some people need to realize is some people listen to their computer on five, cause they don't wanna get blown out. Okay, they listen to things that are loud. Some people listen it on ten all the time. So someone who listens on five and someone listens on ten, it's gonna be different. I don't need the compressor. It's not a radio station. It's not a, I don't know, man. Trying to get too technical. Chatroom engineers, for sure, music. You know what I mean? I'm just talking about the sound drops, cause nobody has a problem with the mic, apparently. Alright, so now what I'm gonna do is again, I'm, that's this machine, the one that I spent the whole night on. Okay, so all, all of them are completely even and it's on an even level. So you guys say it's nice. So what now I need to do is put the other one on that same level, but go back through that machine and do it. It doesn't peak way, it's not even peaking at all. It's not even halfway to the peak, man. So I don't know what you're talking about, pig. Do you want me to film it and show it to you? I'll do twenty drops on a video and show you every, not one of them goes even clearer, even yellow, much less a red. Not even into the yellow, not one. Not one. You wanna buy the compressor, pig? Go ahead. If not, I don't have to tell you. Thanks, Beefy. You did miss Arnold Sachs weed. He was kinda off today. It was, you know, it was weird, man, because we got like all the usual suspects up close and quick. But these fools shuffled them in and out fast. And you noticed? Do you notice something, guys? Two things. Notice that they always, always, every fucking day, honor somebody. I don't remember them. Did they honor somebody today? Did I miss that? And then they always, when somebody dies, they always honor them too. I don't remember them honoring anybody today. Right? Either way, the living or the dead. Where's my phone? Uh-oh, Bud Light dethrone Modelo becomes the top-selling beer in America, overthrowing Bud Light from its top spot held for years. Holy shit, sorry. Not sorry. Sorry, not sorry. I love how that's a fucking Channel Seven, just pop that up. Anyone else get that on their phone? You have OBS open and you're not even peaking on mine. Thank you, Indigo. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, you know? I don't know, maybe his hearing aids on eleven and it's peaking next to a, you know, it's, it's irritating the subwoofer he's sitting next to. It's feedbacking. I don't know. Got all that feedback. Honored sports card collectors. Yes, LA sports cards, you go down to LA sports cards on eBay and buy your stuff. Alright, so I'm gonna do the other machine here for a sec, guys. Let me, let me just do this for a second. Um. Alright, so. It's dead even with the other one. They're dead even. Okay, now, I'm telling you now, before I even hit it, this machine's gonna be louder than the other one for the most part. Because the drops need to be lower to tick. But let's just hear it. Let's just try, okay? Let's, we're experimenting here. A little loud. So I could do this. See, what I really just need to do is I'll go through the ma- machine and, and like I said, through this one, it'd just take a few hours and get it done. You know, and get them all done. That's it. Just lower them a tick like I did all those. And even these aren't, aren't grafting into the yellow or red, pig. That's loud. And that's still all in the green. So. It's perfect, huh? Seems loud to me in my ears, it's loud. I would rather go through the machine, lower the drops, and then raise it on the mixer. You know what I mean? It's better that way. Do another round. Dude, someone dead in a dumpster.
I see dead people.
Holy shit. Hmm, try to, try to take his fucking, his dirt bike, I guess he said? Dodger fan, of course. To big up, big ups all the Dodger fans. The Dodgers won yesterday against those Sox, five nothing. Male mental illness? I didn't cruisin'. Choking on that PK, that Pure Kush. The Pure Kush. That one's very loud. Again, it's that machine. It's just the machine. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, here, let's just turn it down for now. Cause I told, I told you it'd be that way. I knew it. So it's okay. I know where we're at now. I know where we're at. So we know the other one's perfect. You guys haven't complained about one on the machine that was the loud one that was blowing my ears off. That's the one that's sounding perfect now. So I know exactly what I need to do. We know exactly where we need to be. I just need to do exactly what I did to that machine and that I did to this one. So that's all. Simple. It just is time consuming. It's, you know, it's, it's simple to do. It's just, you know, it's like doing uh, zeros and ones. It's like coding. It's tedious, but you can get it done. It's not that hard. Some fishing boats, I thought, yeah. I mean, it doesn't look too choppy. You gotta remember, as, as you go down south, the, the water gets really warm. You're in Mexico. The Mexican waters, bro, you're catching the nice fish. That's what they're doing. They're all going from San Diego down into Mexico. And catching big ass yellowtail and tuna, cause the water's so fucking warm. Catching monster fish. So yeah, but even bonita, the bonita and the mackerel over there are just so big. It's like, dude, they're fun to fight. It's not a fish you really wanna catch to eat. I mean, some people do eat them, but they're a fighting fish. They're, they put up a good fight. You know, some fish, they're just, eh. You know, they're bot- like all the bottom feeders. Anything you catch off the bottom, halibut, rock cod, any of those things. You know, sculpins usually down there too. They just, you know, remember, they're so deep, by the time you pull them up, they get the bends, just like you would. You, you're pulling them up too fast and their insides burst. They die. Their tongues out like that. And their eyes are popped out by the time you get them up, because you're pulling them up too fast and they get the bends, just like we do. So. There's no fight to those guys. But the, the middle to top feeders, oh yeah, those ones are the runners. That's the one you're gonna fucking, they're just, zzz, just gone. Halibut is delicious. I'm not saying that, you know, it's a, cause it's a white meat fish and it's, you know, it is a bottom feeder. But uh, and people do love them, but they're not very, they're not fun to catch. You know what I mean? And they have halibut derbies out here. It's like in December, I think, the halibut derby out here, if I'm not mistaken. Um, yeah, I used to do it every once in a while as a kid. Yeah, I used to do it every once in a while as a kid. Go out there to Marina Del Rey and you go out into the harbor and they run the little derbies out there for halibut season. You know, but, uh, yeah, I just think that it's not fun to really catch them. That's all I'm saying. I'd much rather catch something in the middle, a barracuda. A yellowtail, some sort of tuna, some sort of bass, a calico bass, kelp bass, you know, something like that. They all, they're all gonna fight you more and it's fun. That's what you're, I don't eat them. I usually catch and release them. Yeah, but you're not really catching any salmon here, not here in Southern California, even, cause you'd have to go freshwater fishing and there you're catching a small trout. You know, small mouth bass, maybe some large mouth bass if you're lucky, crappie, you know, things like that. Trout, if I didn't already say it. Catfish, you know, you'll catch that stuff, but you're not gonna catch salmon. Not here, not like that, not in Southern California. So, yeah. Talapia? Yeah, talapia is the fish that they fool everybody with apparently. It's like the most common fish they catch and they, oh, you want, you want salmon? Okay, here you go, here's some talapia. Yeah, it's, I mean, salmon, I don't think they could do it because salmon just is a distinct look. Although they fool everybody every day with those. Um, farm, farm salmon. Don't ever buy that, guys. If you want fresh fish, you always, always, always want wild caught. You don't ever want farm bred. Okay? Why? Cause they're sitting in, they're swimming in circles of their own shit and piss, okay? And I hate to break it to you, but if you look up at Google and research, if you research, uh, farm salmon, they're actually gray. They're not red, like a normal salmon would be inside the meat. So how do they fix that? They actually dye the fish. They put dye in there and the fish, and they have a dye chart. They literally have a dye chart showing you how deep or dark you'd want the meat to be. And that's how they do that. And they dye the fish. So that's another reason why you really don't wanna have it. And I get it, people eat it because it's cheaper. Same with the, um, you know, synthetic crab, artificial crab, that kinda shit. That's why people eat it, but it's, it's really not good. It's really not good. It's, yeah, it's great meat, no joke. Look it up. I dare you. I'm calling you, I'm calling the bluff. This is the time to stick your tongue on the pole. Daring you, triple dog dare. Look it up. Catfish, oh, perch, yeah, forgot about perch. Garfish? What a garfish. Alligator gour. Yeah, imitation crab, oof. Yeah, that shit is gross. I'm telling you though, seriously, if you really look it up, it's not good. Don't, anything that's farm raised, you don't want. You do not want that. Fresh only. Wild caught. Only. Craw- we have crawfish out here too. Like, you know, go to the Kern River, which is, you know, probably two hours from my house. You can go up there. Most deadly, deadliest river in California. I'm telling you, they literally have a sign saying, you know, six people killed this year, a hundred ninety-seven total, like that kinda shit. Like, you, you know how like this, it's been zero workdays since an accident kinda shit? They have that, no joke, legit, as soon as you pull up to the river. I mean, uh, yeah, Kern River is definitely, uh, dangerous. I wouldn't go in there. Killer Kern, that's it. That's what they call it. Killer Kern. Cause it doesn't look like it's much. You know what I mean? It just doesn't, but it is. But it is, man. Wet lungs ahead, sweet. Kern flooded this year, I bet. Lot of water. Wonder how it's gonna be this year? I think it's gonna be real warm. I really do. It's already starting to get warm and, you know, we're barely in June. July hasn't even hit us yet. And you know, you, July, August, September, October, November, those five months there are all, um, real warm for us. No rain. You could start to maybe start to think about rain in December. Maybe, maybe. You got a baseball bat? I know that was too loud. It doesn't make sense. Thank you so much for the kind, dono. Thank you so much and I appreciate your following since Periscope. Yeah, no, I turned it down, Chad, so it wouldn't blow you guys out. It's loud on my side though, I can tell. So I just want it even, but it's good though. Because if my experiment worked last night with one machine perfectly, then I know exactly where I need to be with the other. Simple and easy. Easy to imitate now. Is it gonna be time consuming? Yes. It's gonna take me three hours tonight, but it's a good thing. I don't have a show tonight. Take care of that. The only thing I have to do today, I'm gonna take my mom to a Best Buy and buy her a computer for her birthday coming up and, um, yeah, that's it. It's my only, it's my only to do list. Get mom hap- get mommy happy and that's that. Yeah, Hoosier, but I don't get any money from them. Yeah, no show tonight. We'll do our two, uh, what do you call it? Our two shows, um, Friday, of course. Yeah, Hoosier, I don't know if it's maybe I gotta have over a hundred bucks first in order to get the first payout. That's probably what it is. I haven't made much money on there. That's probably what it is. No, Jonathan, it is not. It's next month. It's in a few weeks, but look, I've just been so busy. I know my life is like right now, so I just would, I would rather, I would rather just take care of her gift now with her and I'd, like I, I always tell her and everybody else, I'd rather get you something that you're gonna use. Versus something you're just not gonna use and that's something she's gonna use every day and she's, she has a computer now. It's just like old and it's like, you know, on the blink. So before it goes out completely, I figured why not get her something nice for that and, you know, it'd be her holiday gift and her birthday gift all shot in one and it helps me. So that way I don't have to go out and gift shop and, you know what I mean? And she gets something really good for the year and, and it's something she's gonna use every frickin' day. And, um, yes, I just told her, you know, figure out what you want for the last week. So I don't care what you want. I know she hates Mac. Any Mac buying. We won't be doing that. She's a PCer like most of you guys. So she, she loves the friggin PCs. So I'm gonna go get her a nice PC, um, you know, get her something nice and new. I'd like to get her, I'd like to get her, uh, Chad, some, she won't do it. She refuses to go to Mac. She refuses. She's been a PC lady her whole life. And, and she's like, you know, on Mac like I am on PC. I don't know what I'm touching, where I'm going. I bought that one. I'm telling you, I, dude, I'm touching things, things are popping up. It's. And you know what's crazy? The difference between a, a PC, um, a, like a Hewlett Packard laptop and a, a Mac laptop? My God, the weight. You can feel the fucking weight between a PC. It just feels like it's flimsy, like I could literally just snap it. If I wanted to take it and just be pissed and snap it, I feel like I could do that with a PC. There's just no way you're doing it with a Mac. No way. You'll take a Mac and beat somebody over the head with it and it's a straight brick. But the problem with the Mac in the long run is, you know, they always do the updating of the operating systems, then five operating systems down, it doesn't operate anymore. So you're stuck on that last system and some things you may need, you want, might not be able to do. But I say to you, by that time, your PC would be shit anyways and be worth a hundred bucks. So you'd be buying a new PC anyways. So there is that. Tit for tat. Yeah, she's definitely not upgrading stuff. Yeah, she just, you know, she likes, you know, her, it's clerical stuff. She like, you know, quick inbox and that kinda crap and, you know, sending emails, nothing special. My mom's not, you know. My mom's an, you know, older lady. She just enjoys doing solitaire on the computer and things like that. She's, she's not doing anything crazy. It's more about bookkeeping and, and keeping her stuff like that. So it'd be a good gift for her. I'm gonna take her to get that today. Like I said, knock that out. That way that's done and she's happy and then I can come back here and do the second machine, then I'm happy, knowing goddamn well, I don't even have to ask you guys, we fixed the issue with the echo now than it wasn't yesterday. Then the machines will be perfect. Then I wanna do one thing. Now I changed Stinks's camera. I wanna fix it though. I haven't, I need to fix it. Okay, see, look. No, no, that's not it. Let's see, uh. See, it's that one, but I need to turn the camera on now. What I did was is this shot right here that you're seeing right there in the corner is now gonna be the one shot you see for him with the new, new camera we bought. Uh, on this screen, but I need to have that box smaller and darker, cause you can see the little bit of white through it. You see how you see the white screen in there? So, yeah. Need to do a little adjustment and, uh, we'll do that. Fix it all up. Nothing wrong with solitaire. I'm just saying that's the kinda stuff she likes. You know, she likes crossword puzzles, things like that. She likes keeping her mind sharp. It's actually great. I love that she does that. Keeps her mind sharp. Not that she's not all there, cause she's sharp as a tack. I'll tell you that. She just, I just meant like she's not upgrading it to play video games or, you know what I mean? Like she's, you know, to have more fucking RAM so her, something works faster, like, no. None of that. None of that is occurring. That's the good thing too. No OnlyFans for her. I hope not. Your mom's eighty-five, just switched to the iPhone? You know, Air Force, it's great. I listen to these guys who do, um, you know, like ham radio ops, operators. One of them's eighty-five, funny enough as it is. He just got an iPhone, switched from, from, uh, Android. And boy, oh boy, to hear the thirty and forty year old hams trying to explain to that eighty-five year old guy how to delete a contact or something, it's fucking amazing. He gets so angry so fast and they're, they're literally step by step. Alright, you push the green button. It should be on the top right. I don't see no goddamn green button. You wanna come here and see it? It ain't there. And it's hysterical. It's co- it's comedy gold. It's gold. Alright, somebody half naked on drugs? Hell yeah. Ah, yeah, it's awesome to hear him go through the whole trials and tribulations of learning the iPhone at eighty-five. It's fucking comedy gold. Ay yi yi. I mean, not to say that I don't, my mom's very savvy with it too and she's not that. She's, she's in her seventies, but, uh, she, um. She, uh, is pretty good with it, you know, with the phone. I mean, again, when you really look at it, even myself, there's so many settings. I mean, let's be honest, there's so many settings and then there's so many updates all the time to new settings and shit. Even us, younger folk. They're the favorite Lone Star? Wow. I mean, Lone Silencer, sorry. And again, congratulations to Matt Irma and all the Vegas Knights fans and of course the Golden Knights for winning the cup. Now I have to say, you know, some of people were mad hitting me up, but why don't you, you know, you're racist, bro. You were on when Denver won. Well, first off, we had a, 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 a live shot there on the ground and a, and an aerial shot. In Vegas, I had no ground shot and I looked, there was no aerial shot. All I saw was TNT shot of the people in the square. They did do a little bit of dancing. There was no fireworks. There was no cone throwing. They were, you know, it was their first championship. They didn't really know what to do. I don't know. So again, it didn't get rowdy and that's another reason why I didn't, you know, trust me, when things get rowdy, I might even be on, but I'm still monitoring. If it gets crazy, I'll go on. You know, and that's just really why I didn't go on. When the Rams won, I was there, live. I went down. You guys saw me smoking weed in the streets. You know, uh, with Jeremy, with Alien, uh, Alphabet and, um, who else was there? Somebody else? PMTV, I think. So, I mean, I don't think LA's gonna win anything anytime soon. What, question? Who in Los Angeles, which team in Los Angeles only is going to win the next championship? Lakers, Dodgers, Kings? Soccer, Rams, Chargers? Who's the closest? Rams? Rams? Dodgers, if anything? Dodgers, Kings, Rams? I mean, the Kings, I don't know, man. Uh, King, depends on what the Kings do in the offseason. Let's see if they improve a little bit. I mean, they had a great year for what they have. Well, S, no, I'm talking about pro teams, Lone. Not, not, uh, college, no NCAA, cause nobody really gives a shit when Bruins or USC wins. I mean, the kids might go a little crazy on sorority or fraternity royal. That's it. That's about all. City ain't going crazy. Now, when the Dodgers win, the Lakers win, they go fucking crazy. Kings win, eh, eh. I mean, you saw them go crazy with the Rams. Dodgers for sure, huh? Everybody's saying the Dodgers. Probably true. I would say the Dodgers are the closest. Chargers bolt up. I know DS wants that. Lakers win riot for sure, yeah. I just remember them jumping up and down on homeboy's Lamborghini, fucking it up, just like they did in Denver the other night, fucking homeboy's top of his truck up. So, yeah. I think you guys are right. I think it'd probably be the Dodgers. I don't know if the Lakers, Lakers would have to do some serious moves. The Kings would have to acquire somebody big and, and, and still have everybody back and for the most part, the core. But the Rams. Rams had a shitty season last year. They, all they did was lose players. They didn't really pick anybody up. So I couldn't see how the Rams would do any better. And I don't see the Chargers doing it. Chargers probably have a better record than the Rams will this year, but I don't see the Chargers. Especially not being the team out of the AFC. However, the Chiefs, come on. Although they play them well. They play Mahomes pretty darn well. I, I don't, I just don't see it happening. Looks dry in Minnesota. It is. It's a nice little bit of summer, I guess. Apparently they only get like a month and a half of summer. So, it's, the, uh, snow just dried and that's it. Now it's time to enjoy for a month and a half. I wouldn't put my money on any of those teams. I mean, it's been thirty-one years since the Canadians won. I wanna tell you, people think I'm crazy, but the last Canadian team, like I told you, to win the Stanley Cup, to raise it, was in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three. Canadians did it against the Kings. But if you remember correctly, there was a call in that series with Marty McSarly having a stick with too much curvature. Somebody looked at his stick and said, oh, it's too curved. You need to look at his stick. They stopped the game, took the tool out, measured his stick. Yep, it's too curved. Give him a penalty. Went on the power play. They scored, changed the momentum of the series. Changed everything. So there you go. So I say to you that that call may have jinxed. Canada. Because think about it, ever since that cup win, they ain't won shit. Place looks depressing. Well, I mean, it is, it is. St. Paul is, I guess, not the prettiest of places. It was Guy Carbonneux. I mean, they had a great team. Guy Carbonneux, Stephane LeBeau, Patrice Bergeron. You know, I'm sorry, Patrice Bejba. You know, Patrick Waugh, Russ Kortnall. Dennis Savard. They had an all-star team, man. Tons of great players. Hey, look who's here. The last. Cruisin'. When was the last time they won? Was with Jordan Pippen and Rodman. Problem? At McDonald's. So sometimes it is what it is, you know? Four followers from one K on rumble. Let's get it. Thank you, Brendan. So close. You know, I'd be closer if, if I could just turn it on like all the other ones and they just stay turned on, but rumble's weird, man. They haven't got all their shit together. They're still too new. I mean, I literally have to erase the channel every single time and erase it from the list. Three eleven man, what's he doing? Showing his dick or something? What's he doing?
You ever seen a grown man naked?
No, he's not naked though. Where's my other drop for him? Too many naked drops. No. There it is. Another attempt GTA. What's going on? Kia boys. Look at the Black Hawk. Sweet. Yeah. Kia boys. You know, they were all really cool guys, those Cana- the Montreal Canadiens that year. I have to give it to them. None of them were me, not even Waugh. They were all very nice guys. I still have a box filled with autographs from, I mean, it must be five of every one of the players that played that in that cup and won that cup. I have a few, a few pucks signed by Waugh. So they were very nice. But it was also, you know, that was a time where, you know, even with autograph seekers, not many people gave a fuck about hockey players. Like they would go and chase down basketball player or something or a football player, but when it came to hockey players, they didn't give a shit. So me and my buddy would be the only one there like, what are you two dorks doing here? Waiting for you? No, really? No, really? Really? Yeah. Here's my, here's your cards. Look. Next thing you know, they're thumbing through your cards like, hmm, I don't have this one. Take one, man. They'll take one for themselves of themselves and then, uh, you know, they'll sign the rest for you. We had a lot of conversations like that because they're waiting for a bus to get picked up to go to the skate, morning skate. So they have nothing to do. They're just sitting there. They don't know anybody, not on their phone. Hey, hey, stop, stop it. Bro, really right now? This is what I need, huh? Can you see his fucking? Oh, you can't even see it. I hate, come on, what are you doing? Please, please, I just spent all that time. He's on the other side laying on all the wires, sticking his hand at me. You know, trying to, trying to swipe at me. Man, get off that. Bro. Alright, I need a picture of this. Oh boy. God dang it. You see? Fucking got it. Oh, you can't even fucking see it. What I gotta deal with? You see? What I gotta deal with? This fucking arm just whack. I, it's all I see. I don't see even the rest of him. It's just an arm that just keeps coming out, whacking the shit out. And I know he's on, on top of the wires because the wires are all bundled up over there. Hey. Such a weirdo. Man, I swear to God, he's a weirdo. He makes me laugh though, that he's. It's like when he runs on the wall, like he totally doesn't need to run on the wall and he just does it anyways. You know, it's ninja. Yeah, it's the ninja in him.
Alright, thanks. I'm pulling your lip.
Yeah, now I'm pulling his arm. You can't pull it back now.
He's stuck.
Yeah, he's stuck now, stankums. Didn't even care. Had his whole hand just pulling it. He didn't even care. His pimp hand is strong. It is though. He does have a strong pimp hand. Been pimpin' since, been pimpin' since, been pimpin'. I don't want him as a sound tech. I already got enough problems. Coast Guard? It's a fireboat. I think that's what it is. I think that's what it is. It's a fireboat. Naked woman?
You mean vagina?
Are we like gonna do it?
Tits were unbelievable.
Oh man, I love titties, so.
Uh, does she have big hooters?
I don't know. We're gonna find out. Stinks always does win. It's unfair, but it is that way. Sea tractor seven? Sea tractor seven. Look at all the Blackhawks, guys. Look at that. One, two, three, four Blackhawks. Holy shit. There's one about to take off a little bit to the right too. You can see the propeller. There he is. It's about to shove off. Dude, look at all those birds. Oh boy. Oh boy. Look at those birds. Another one about to take off. Dude, look at all that. She's not naked. She's naked from the waist down. Apparently she's just showing her stuff. Hmm, hair pie. Hmm. Dude, look at the line of those goddamn fucking helicopters. I mean, that's how many, how many tens of millions of dollars? How many hundreds of millions already that we've just seen now? That just doesn't stop. That ain't a loop, ladies and gentlemen. That ain't no loop. That ain't no shit neither. Yeah, it's all that Navy money. I mean, you got Coronado Islands, so you just, you know, you're, uh, all the SEAL training is out here. You got Camp Pendleton for the Marines out here. So you got a lot of, lot going on. Little Broski, thank you for the bits. Yeah. Shout out to San Diego webcam, mate. It's a beautiful cam setup. Look at that shit. The Ospreys over there. Look at that. Look, more of them. Look at the Osprey. Dude, those propellers are huge. Jesus, the Seahawks. Dang, look at that shit, bro. Have we seen a, have we seen a billion dollars worth of equipment yet? I think so. And helicopters. I want to say so. There's the runway right there. I think any jets are landing there. I think it's just a helicopter pad. Seen some Chinooks too. I didn't even, I missed the Chinook. Those things are loud, man. Fucking Chinooks. Not to say that these all, dude, Ospreys are loud. They're always rolling in, in pairs and man, when they come over the house, it's fucking loud. You can hear them coming. Like they're not sneaking up on anybody with those fucking things. Where I want to be. No, that's the Navy base, I believe. It's the naval part. Undersea rescue command. You know, and then you have coast guard there too, I'm assuming as well. And Camp Pendleton, I think is a little up north, if I'm not mistaken. Because you can see Camp Pendleton before you hit San Diego. You look to the right towards the water and you see them in tanks and fucking helicopters. It is a boat chase. There's another boat. Look at that thing, bro. What is that thing, bro? What is that with the tugboat? Hold on a second. What kind of new fucking naval ship is that? Bro, I ain't never seen no shit like that. Fuck is that? That thing's wild. You see that jet? Bro, that's one of those, a zoom world? Is that what it's called? It's a destroyer? Dude, that thing is rad. I hope he zooms in. I want to see that. Look, it's getting pulled, isn't it? By the, thought it was. My bad. Tugboat's just next to it. It's hard to see. It's a stealth ship, right? I mean, it's like, it looks like a radar is bending off that motherfucker. I hope he zooms in too. That thing's fucking rad, dude. You want to know where all your money's going? That's what it is. Building that twenty-eight billion dollar ship. And look at the Black Hawk flying above. Look, 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 look. See it up there? See, they got so much shit going on. Like I said, and they're always training the SEALs out here. The Navy SEALs train out here, so. That's the one and only place I believe is Coronado Island. That's all. I mean, they come from across the country to, to, uh, I think you're so big. What happened to you? Just to be big. It's a big, have a good day. Another call off a fig. Hopefully it comes this way. I think it's turning towards us. I don't know. It's hard to tell, but it looks like it's shit. It's turning this way. Don't get me wrong. Dude, that thing's wild looking. And think about how like unwided it's not very wide. So if you were straight with it, trying to shoot a torpedo at it, it'd be tough to hit it. Unless you were hitting it at the broadside, you know, sideways. Fucking jet skiers out there having a ball too. It's a nice day. Wave runners, jet skis, all doing it. It's a wave runner, bro. Just can you stand up? Yeah, buds. Ladoral, Latoral, uh, combat ship. Is that what it is? LCS? Nice. It sure looks like it's made for combat. It's probably got a nuke on that motherfucker. All the shit you'd see during fleet week here would be wild, I bet. Another fucking Black Hawk overhead. Yeah, because they're, they train the SEALs in the helicopters too, so. Sure, that's another reason for it. Navy's busy, man. Uh, I do Lone Silencer and I, you know, he realizes it too. He's going to get beat up. If not, he needs help. I mean, didn't, that's why I was saying earlier, the Rams didn't pick anybody up. All they really did was lose players. They didn't pick anybody up really significant that I saw, so. You know, and you didn't pick up Ode, uh, you know, Odell or anybody else. You needed a good number two receiver. We don't really have that. We have a bunch of young guys who may be that soon, but that's, you know, not now. So if you're trying to achieve another playoff run, you need another receiver. And they should get Dalvin Cook. Sign Dalvin Cook today. Top ten rusher last year, almost top five. I think he was sixth in rushing. You sign him today. You, that is a great addition to your running game. And what does running the ball do? It opens it up for the passing game. Got to have both. Okay. And they know nine out of ten times you're going to go to cup. So you need somebody else, somebody that can actually catch the ball, even if it's just little short routes, something, you know, a slot. You know, you don't need another slot receiver because that's cup's job. You know, you need somebody on the outside who's going to catch the ball. The tight end position's good. Higbee, if he stays healthy, he's good. It's a pro bowler. D hop, maybe? Could be. Because if anybody's willing to probably take less money, I mean, if you want to go to a team that could be somewhat of a contender, I mean, I don't think, you'd have to do a lot of changes. You'd need D hop, you'd need Dalvin Cook, you'd need one more decent receiver and some help on the defensive side. Because you gave up some defensive players. So you need help on the line. The O line too. I mean, dude, Stafford gets racked up. Gets sacked all the time. So that's the problem, you know, they, they need help in lots of places. They gave up everything and all those picks to make those two runs and they lost once, right? Against, uh, Tom Brady. And then they won the next one. Right? So and then in essence, it was worth it. You made two Super Bowl runs and you won one. But now, you know, reality's starting to set in. You don't have many picks and you know, we'll see where they go. They need some sort of free agent help. I mean, Stan Kronke, that's the great thing. That dude is actually willing to spend the money. You know he is. He has tons of it. He doesn't care. So that's all I'm saying. Sign Dalvin Cook, sign a few other, uh, players and you really could be a contender in the, uh, NFC West this year. It would be them and the Niners or the Seahawks. I think the, you know, Cardinals, let's be honest, the Cardinals haven't really done anything and they're going in reverse. Right? I think we can all agree there. They're going in reverse. So it's really between those three teams to win the division. Seahawks had a, a pretty damn good year with a mediocre quarterback who never did nothing in his entire career. And, you know, but Gino played well. Let's see if he does it again. Dodgers need pitching. Well, I mean, you know, Bobby Miller's playing well. He's playing fantastic. What we need is Walker Buehler to come back off of a double Tommy John. Dodgers need a running back. They need that too. Dodgers need a running back. They need that too. They will, Ram. Jalen got traded, right? So I mean, you know, that's what I'm saying. There's some, there's some shoring up on both sides of the ball. And as far, it really in special teams too. You need a kicker, right? Didn't we give up, I think we gave up the punter too this year, so. You know, Hacker's gone too. I mean. Lot of positions to fill. And you know what that means? When you have to a lot of positions to fill, you need chemistry again. Well, Seahawks have plenty of talent. Right? I mean, uh, Kenneth Walker was a great pick. You know what I mean? Uh, Gino's playing outside of his mind better than he ever has. Maybe it's because he just never got the starting chance. To be believed in. You know, like I said, they, you know, and, and you know, twelfth man is big too. Alright guys, I think I'm gonna get out of here, but, um, yeah, it was fun today, man. Cause again, we're, all it is is just, you know, nothing much now. So I'm gonna get going. I'm gonna take care of, like I said, some stuff with my mom and then come back here and take care of the machines. So that's all good to go and, and I'm not blasting anybody out. We're all goods to go. But, uh, I appreciate all the help with the, uh, oh, look at that. There it is, guys. Hold on. I wanna take a look at this really quick. Look at that fucking thing, dude. Holy shit. I told you it was being pulled by the tugboat. I knew it. Fucking tugboats, man. Tugboat was awesome in WWF. Fucking, he was better as tugboat than he was as typhoon. Just my opinion. Fucking dope, bro. I gotta see it real quick before I get out of here. And look at the little sailboat next to it. It's like, oh, I gotta see this shit too. Get your phone out, bro. Dude, that thing is wild, dude. Just so odd. It's so sleek. I mean, look at it, dude. It totally looks like it's just radar bouncing off that fucking thing. Whenever you've seen a ship that big, that thin? Like from the frontal, you know, frontal angle. You know, head on. Usually the anchors on the side of the ship too. You notice the anchors in the front on the nose? Maybe for, uh, not hold it back, wind resistance. Who knows? It can go a little quicker. WWF does roll. I, I watch whole ones all the time. He, there's some good, there's a dude on, on, uh, YouTube who like remasters and puts up a lot of the old ones, the very first ones. And I just watch those. And sometimes I don't even watch them. I just listen to them while I'm sorting cards. And I'll look up occasionally when something funny's happening. I just wanna hear the play by play and shit. Good stuff. Wave cutter. Yeah, that shit's fucking awesome, dude. Another fucking, uh, aircraft carrier in the rear back there. Look at it. Just ship after ship everywhere, baby. Be really cool to have like a house on the bay checking that shit out. Breaking news, FBI arrests two men, including an active duty Marine in a two thousand, a twenty twenty-two firebombing. Twenty-two firebombing of a Planned Parenthood in Costa Mesa. Oh, boy. There you go. As we're talking about servicemen, there you go. One gets caught for firebombing a Planned Parenthood. Another Blackhawk above them right now. Pretty awesome. Wave runner had to come check it out like, look at this shit. Look how big it is, dude. Wow. That gun is a trip and it, it doesn't look like it's armed enough. I just say to myself, there's gotta be like some sort of missile tubes that we're not seeing because if that's the only gun that it's got, just no way. Three eleven man showing his dick on fig. So there we go. We have an ARAM on the top for, uh, aerial vehicles, right? Shoot down planes that are trying to, or you know, missiles that are coming at it. You know, for defense. So I see two. I don't know. I don't see a whole lot besides that. Let's hopefully we'll see, uh, the side here. Maybe we'll get a better shot. I mean, uh, San Diego webcam is killing it. Yeah, with the shots. Are those, are those missile racks? With no missiles on them or something? Launch tubes? Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's what those are. Launch tubes. Sounds about right on Figaro. Couple sailors on the deck. Doesn't even look like it holds that many people. I mean, how many people can it hold on there? You know what I mean? Pretty fucking, oh shit, you see the old ass plane go by? She looked like a P fifty-one Mustang or something. Did you see it? That's wild. Hey, sold the card. Cool. Q. Yeah, just, I'm telling you, everybody's trying to see what this shit is. Look at the, look at the little rib boat on the side. And for the Navy SEALs to go attack, you know, you put them on the rib boat. They can launch them right off that shit. You know, helicopter lands on the back, puts them on the boat, then they go on the rib boat from there. Pretty fucking rad, dude. I mean, I would think it would seem more heavily armed. I, as I'm saying, it's just gotta have stuff that we're not seeing. I got a that tube hole right there. I could totally see missiles coming out of that shit. I mean, I guess it's as good as yours most of you. I don't know. First time I've ever seen this thing. I would think to myself though, that wouldn't be enough just with the tubes and the two guns that we've seen. Like I would think it'd be well more heavily armed than that. All the sailors on there. That's pretty cool, man. US Navy, mate. Seems like this tube here. What is that for? Why? I mean, maybe it's a ballast. I don't know if things are starting to leak. You know what I mean? Those kinds of things. Keep it upright. I don't, I don't know. And look how it's corroded. It's weird. Look at that shit. Cause you know this motherfucker ain't old. Right? Look at all the waters that corroded that shit. Discolored, discolored the shit out of it. It's weird. That's why I said a C RAM on the back up there, right here for the fucking planes. And/or fucking missiles being shot at you. You wanna shoot those missiles down before they take you out. Good old C RAM. And it looks like it's got a missile launcher next to it. Look. If you, it's got two parts to it. I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. You think that's a launcher, not a minigun at all, huh? I'm looking, I'm thinking it's both. So where's the minigun in the back then? If that's the launcher? Cause you'd say to yourself, wouldn't you need a gun in the front and the rear in case somebody's coming up on the rear on you? You know what I mean? You're just gonna launch, you know, ordinance that way. I would figure you'd just at least, you know, suppress them by shooting downrange at them, whether you're doing anything or not. Suppression and in, in and of itself is enough to help you get away sometimes. Yeah, it doesn't seem like much, Mike. Like it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it would hold hundreds of sailors. You know, you gotta figure there's gotta be a lot of engine room, engine in there. That's why you have all the exhaust. You know, vents. It's fucking crazy, dude. It's cool looking like a motherfucker though. I mean, even the bays aren't very big. Big enough to land a helicopter probably and scoot it inside there if you need it. I wonder how that thing fares against like crazy water, you know, crazy waves, swells. Sure, it's just like any other boat. It's susceptible to everything else. They do have those anti-rocking mechanisms though. It's like a ballast that gets heavy in the middle. They have them on little like fisher boats too. Guys, I'll see you later. I'm gonna go check out her because she's got no pants on. Go see me some stuff. What's going on? Why do we have like four three elevens already since we've ended the city council meeting? Is it, is it a full moon today? Is it? I didn't even check. It might be.
I feel perfect around.
Next full moon is July third, so no, it's not. Monday, July third is the next full moon. But, uh, yeah. Apparently not. It's just a crazy, just a bunch of crazy motherfuckers out there. Alright guys, I'm gonna get out of here because I got, I got things to do. It's pretty awesome to see, like I said, San Diego webcam. You sit down over there in the corner and go check them out on YouTube and see this yourself. Happy hump day to you as well, James. I'm gonna, uh, like I said, I gotta take off. I gotta take care of moms and take care of some stuff with her, but, um, yeah, then I'll come back, take care of the other machines. So we're rocking and rolling, ready for Friday morning. No more issues. We got the Echo taken care of that didn't even pop up. One machine's completely done, so now it's just the second machine. And I know where you need to be. So I appreciate you helping me, uh, um, set the levels. I appreciate you for hanging out and having fun with the LA City Council meeting. Um, I appreciate you being patient. I want you to have a great hump day and a fantastic rest of your week. I will see you Friday morning at ten fifteen AM. Here on Smoke and Scan, unless there's a police chase. But other than that, I will see you then. You guys have a fantastic time. Be good, be safe, and I'll see you on the next one.
Hasta la vista, baby.